It's 5:30, we'll call the meeting before we have a forum. We'll begin with a pledge led by Linda Maxwell.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now join Mary Ann Lee as she prayers. I'm sorry, we'll go over to Texas.
Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the state of Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
And now Mary Ann will lead us in prayer.
Okay, let's pray. Dear Lord, we thank you for this day, for the warmth of the day, for everyone who is here. We thank you for the students, for the faculty, administrators, everyone who's here. And please bless each one as they go along their way. Lord, we thank you for this, this special group where we can try to do the best for the kids. Please help us, please help us make the right decisions. Lord, we thank you for this town, this country. Please be with everyone and please, Lord, help us to remember to be kind. And Lord, please bless everybody who's got cedar allergies. In Christ's name, amen.
Student spotlights.
All right, well, what a welcome everybody tonight and thank you all for coming. We got students and parents and staff to recognize that Roger Miller is here to thank our school board for Board Appreciation Month. But we'll start with the students. And so we have been looking at senior attendance. Senior attendance for our 12th graders is usually kind of crummy. And so we've been trying to improve it and get things better, but we wanted to spotlight tonight 16 years who had perfect attendance for the whole first semester. And so I wrote down here, you've probably heard the term senioritis. And you define senioritis as a supposed affliction of students in their final year of high school characterized by a decline in motivation or performance. And that's not these guys. They're coming every day, trying their best. And on top of that, there's some legitimate stuff going around like the cedar fever and RSV and flu and strep and COVID and it seemed like everyone was sick right before Christmas. And so for these guys to be here and have perfect attendance is really a feat. And so we're really proud of you guys. I hope no one's absent from the meeting, that'd be ironic. We want to give you guys a certificate and take your picture to go in the newspaper and just say thank you guys for being so hardworking and doing such a good job. So I'll say the names of these students and y'all clap for them. If you're students, y'all come up and get your certificate. Gracie Hilliker.
She might be working.
Okay.
Yeah, she's not.
Hey, that's a good excuse. Joey Williams. Tiffany Newman. Jade Maisy. Nathaniel Johnson. And Jacob Ibarra. And y'all come on up, we'll take a picture right quick for Mr. Osborne here.
I'll need you to ID him all later.
Okay, I will.
All right. Okay, here we go. No warning this time, I'm mistaken.
It's gonna go viral.
Yep. Thank you.
Thank you, guys. And we'll make sure those other three are working, get their certificate and get that to Jeff. All right. Next up is our staff spotlight. And so we've been honoring some programs that were very successful in the fall. None were more successful than the band and as far as all the other groups, the Color Guard and the Dazzlers, that whole combined group. As we've gone over, they, on October 15th, earned a superior rating at Midway and they advanced to Area. And then Area, on October 29th, they participated at Liberty Hill. And they beat out some very, very tough competition. And so they finally got that trip to state that they'd been working so hard for. And on November 9th, at the Alamo Dome, we had an 18th place finish, which that is fantastic because all of those bands and flag corps and programs are spectacular. They make no mistakes. And so to get 18th is just fantastic and it's the highest we've ever placed. And so in our school history, so Jose Sanchez, Victor Garza, Michael Hamilton and Corbin Myers, they directed the band. We had Helen Gonzalez directing the Dazzlers and we had G D Collins and Caleb Williams directing the Color Guard. And so to put all those moving pieces together and compete at that level was just fantastic. I really enjoyed it. As a late person watching that, I thought, man, that was good. And but all the bands were good. And so to have competed at that level was really impressive. And so we also want to thank the parents, all the other staff that helped out. And in February, we'll thank some reps from the students that went there too. Can't fit the whole 105 band members in here, but we can get a few of them in here and take their picture and thank them. So guys, y'all come on up, give these guys a round of applause. Corbin's first.
Young guys.
You got a lot of young guys here, Victor. You should say. Genie. Helen's. I forgot Helen, no, I'm joking.
Caitlin's taking college class.
Caitlin's taking college class, okay. So we'll get in a whole group here and take y'all's picture for the paper. Yep.
All right. Here we go. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, guys. Okay, Roger, you honor these board members, it's Board Appreciation Month.
Is it really?
It is.
That time of the year again. Well, first of all, Dr. Pollard, members of the board, I appreciate the opportunity to come and speak with you just very briefly tonight. Because if I don't make it very brief, we could be here all night long. No, it, it has dawned on me, it's kind of opened up a new perspective for me personally over the last several years in recognizing school boards. Because one of the things I found out very early on is we have five independent school districts within Correal County. And they each have their own very unique personality, their own very personal style that caters to the development of those children. And that's not to say one is better or worse than the other. I applaud all of you because you cater that learning environment to the children and the community and their demands. Your efforts to be responsive to that, I truly appreciate that. You've also faced challenges that have been unprecedented. You know, we beat the COVID word to death. But then there's, you know, classroom learning, non-classroom learning, a hybrid of in and out of classroom learning. And then how do you recreate that learning environment? Well, I'm not going to speak so much to the learning environment, but obviously, you know, with the performances that we've seen, you know, athletically within the other realms, the non-athletic realms, what you're creating and fostering is an environment that challenges kids to a level of excellence. And there's nothing better in life than looking back and saying, hey, we've achieved excellence, whatever that standard may be. So from the bottom of my heart, I really tell you, I appreciate the time and the efforts that y'all spend in supporting Dr. Pollard and his staff to create that environment so kids want to be here. You six, what is wrong with you? And that's what I wanted to say, no, I mean, I applaud you. But obviously, there's an environment where they want to be here. So, you know, that's a great thing. So I won't go through all of the wherashes because they're repetitive year after year. But this is School Board Recognition Month. And now therefore, hereby proclaimed that the Commissioners Court of Correal County does hereby declare the month of January 2023 as School Board Recognition Month and declare our appreciation to the members of the Gatesville School Board and urge all citizens to recognize the dedication and hard work of local school board members and in working with school board members to mold an educational system that meets the needs of both today's and tomorrow's children. So with that, I think.
Thank you.
Yeah, I even got a handshake out of that, I don't know why.
Yeah, I was thinking, I might want to get a picture of you just standing there with.
With, with. Yeah, with these guys here. Do y'all want to stand up and switch in just a little bit? Can you get them on?
Let's see. Yeah, I might need to move them in just a little bit.
Can I just see it? Everything was good until Miller shows up.
All right. Oh yeah, this is good, I can even come in a little bit. All right, y'all ready?
No.
Okay. Mostly ready. All right, here we go. All right, thank you.
Well, to piggyback off of what Roger said, we wanted to get you guys a gift and we know that a shirt would be something good that y'all can all match. And so we've got the traditional hornet, body hornet logo on there that we know y'all like the most. And so hopefully y'all can, we may wear those on occasion and be matching. And so we'll look really spiffy. But like what Roger was saying, after y'all got done with COVID, we went straight to Uvalde. You know, and it seems like the nation's always responding to some sort of horrible tragedy and it creates stress on you guys. And I would say your response to that, helping us through that, and then also the other big thing was the budget shortfall and still getting everybody a raise. You know, those were two really big accomplishments that other staff appreciates for sure. So thank you, guys, we appreciate it. We know it's just a small token for all the stuff you have to put up with, but we do appreciate you. So thank you, guys.
Is there anyone here that has a comment to the school board that's not on the agenda? We'll skip that section then and go to consent agenda. The consent agenda are items that are routine that the school board decides not to discuss in detail and we just go down and pass them. They include minutes of December 12th, 2022 regular meeting, financial statements as of December 31st, 2022, bills and payrolls for December 2022, budget amendments, urinate budget amendments to fund balance, vital signs report and food service report. Does anyone have a need to hear any more about any of those? So do I hear a motion to accept those? Linda Maxwell, seconded by Calvin. All approved. And we approve those. Now information items begins with therapy dog program update.
Joyce Cole is here. And she's got Bishop. And Stacy.
Yay.
Yay, Stacy.
I'm actually his assistant.
Okay.
And we.
Yes, very color coordinated.
I know.
First of all, of course, y'all all know Bishop. You can go sit, it's okay. I made him sit and stay during the pledge, during the prayer, and now he's like,
Yes.
Can I move around or what? He is loving his job, I will tell you that. The neat thing about him is, is that he's making kids and staff happy. Every time he walks in a building, you can see the smiles on their faces. It just, the climate of the school's changed, the climate of the kids changed. And here he goes, he's gonna make sure, he knows I'm talking about. And so we've got a little PowerPoint and so it's got teacher input in it and then I also have some teacher input. And he kind of, the junior high steals him a lot, they keep him a lot on campus. And, and he.
Every chance we get.
And he has fleas too.
That's called cedar. Yep, come here.
I'm impressed that he's black and gold.
Yes.
Yes. And so we wanted to show you some of his stuff and what he's doing. And we call, she calls him his bestest boy ever. And so this is Bishop, we'll look at this and then we'll read you some other things that we have here, so.
He looked very festive right there.
That was what the.
Homecoming.
No, yeah, yes, homecoming, that was homecoming. So.
Lots of pictures with the students.
Lots of pictures with the students. And this is all the things that they have said. And there he is doing what he does best. And you can see he sits in their lap, he loves on them, he greets them in the hallways. And he's not jumping on people and acting like a fool, he actually acts like a therapy dog. And so, and as you can see, it's not only, it's teachers too, the teachers love him. And the treat is actually in a room. He actually has, I think, two or three beds in the junior high in different areas and treats everywhere, so. And you can see down here on the left, she's actually teaching a class and he's just laying there. And, you know, just, he's not, he does not disrupt the classroom. He is so well mannered and when, and the kids know what to expect of him too. But he, he just comes in and, you know, he'll just lay there if need be. Now if somebody has something going on, and I'm not sure why they put that up there. That was at the pep rally, was it the pep rally that for?
The Food for Families.
The Food for Families. Him and I came and we had a great time. He chased down the basketball players on the gym floor. And there he is with treats on his bed and the offices, sitting with boys and girls, young men, young women.
He loves the rubber chicken.
He loves.
That's Miss Penrod's.
Yes. Suzie needs a raise to buy rubber chickens.
He likes to decapitate rubber chickens.
And this is some of the things that they've said, you know, Bishop's has been a wonderful addition to help the mental health of both staff and students. You can see the stress just melt away off their faces when he comes down the hallway. Bishop has become an essential part of our school. He is always there to support the kids and those teachers when we need a hug, smile or some laughs. I am very proud that we have him as a part of the team. Bishop is here for both the students and teachers. I see the joy in everyone's faces when he is around. He is one more great reason to come to work. Bishop loves the students and he loves his rubber chicken. There he is tearing one up. One day brought, bought and upset, one day he brought and upset student the rubber chicken to cheer them up. The same day, he accidentally left a chicken in my room and then came back to get it. Nearly daily, I have a student ask me about or talk about Bishop and this came from a high school. They all love him and love that he is available for hugs when needed. I have witnessed students having a rough day and then seeing their stress melt away when petting him. Bishop not only brightens everyone's day, but he provides a much-needed service to these kids. He never judges and always really gives love. Some of these kids never feel that at home and to be able to have that at school is amazing. There are several kids who will not open up to anyone or let anyone know that they need help. These kids will keep everything all bottled up, but when, when around Bishop, they let their guard down and greatly benefit from a Bishop hug. I'm Sarah Blanchard, I teach volleyball at high school. I wanted to write today to share my experience with you about Bishop. My class is one of Bishop's stops at the high school and it makes our day when he comes by. Students often ask if he has come for the day because they have grown to love him and enjoy giving him treats. His motivation for a treat is to sit and shake. Yes, we're starting to work on other tricks soon. My students line up when they see him, students that I have never seen get excited about something, get excited when petting or giving him a snack. He seems to brighten up the mood when he comes by before class starts. We really do miss him if he doesn't make a visit. I love the idea of having Bishop as an emotional support dog for our school system, especially our older students. Statistically, this is science community, that having pets always helps mental health in a positive way. I can attest, this is to be true here at our campus. Because of the world we now live in in Gatesville I S D, employees must teach with their classroom doors shut and locked. Now enters Bishop, a therapy dog, whose job is to make all of our campus better. You may think that an Australian shepherd calling on campus would cause many disruptions. This is not the case. He is often seen escorting a student down the hallway or it is the other way around. Bishop loves every type and group of students. He does not discriminate or show favorites. This is why Bishop is so amazing, he loves unconditionally. As Bishop loves each student he comes into contact with, he still must follow some rules. Bishop is not allowed to walk into a classroom and disturb the teacher or the students. I am a very structured teacher who often freaks out at interruptions, however, Bishop is not one. In fact, he is the opposite. For instance, today he came into my room as a bell rang for a small tasty treat. He ate it quickly and walked up to a handful of students who gave him love. Then he was off and the class was back focused on their warm-up. Today was one of the many examples of this positive influence Bishop has on our campus. It is my wish that he continues to be our therapy dog at junior high, loves him and needs. That's Laura Simms, 7th grade reading. Ooh, I believe that Bishop, I haven't seen this, y'all. I have not seen this, I'm about to cry. I believe that Bishop is a great asset to the school. Bishop does a great job at calming students down as well as making the students and the staff smile. Bishop is not a distraction at all. Whenever Bishop comes into my class, the students get excited and more engaged in the lesson on hand. Bishop has helped several of my students smile when they were having a rough day. Bishop has been a wonderful addition to help the mental health of both staff and students. You can see the stress just melt away their faces when he comes down the hallway. He brings joy and love to everyone when he comes into my room. He is a light for some of these kids. When he comes into my classroom, he doesn't disrupt my class. My kids still do their work as he walks around to see everyone. We love him here at the junior high. Let Bishop be the positive light for G I S D.
That's it.
So.
One thing I want to, I want to say is how appreciative we are that y'all are open and receptive to having a therapy dog on campus. This is the first district I've ever been in where they actually had something like this. And I, as a counselor, noticed the difference. Like she said too, the kids will come in, they're upset, they're crying and they might have their guard up and not really want to open up. But he likes to hide under my desk and he'll hide his treats under there. And so when a kid comes in, you know, he'll come out and he'll go around and he makes sure that he, he loves on them. And I've seen him literally lick the tears off of my kids' faces, which I'm not going to do, so it works out. It's amazing to see how their guard comes down. He's, he really does bring a lot of joy to our campus, to our students and our staff. The janitors love him, the cafeteria, I'm not allowed to bring him in there, but you know, but they come every chance they get, you know, to see him too. And so I just wanted from the bottom of our hearts to thank this administration and board for blessing us with a therapy dog.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's a great update.
So did you want to say anything because he is on your campus?
Well, I think pretty much everything's been said. And he really, I mean, he, multiple classrooms have little treats for him, you're not kidding, there's dog beds hidden places. You know, junior high would love to adopt him as our own. He just always brightens up, you know where he is, you see the groups of kids getting around him. But it's not a disruption, they still get to class on time, they still get to, you know, where they need to be. And but, yeah, he's, he's just been a blessing to the staff and the teachers. I've seen plenty of teachers have, having some rough days and a little bit of time with Bishop and they're, they're good together, ready to roll for the rest of the day.
And he recognizes it.
He does, he does.
So, thank y'all so much, he's loving, he loves to get up in the morning, put on his little.
ID, that's the cutest ID picture ever.
And he's ready to go, he sits up in the front seat and he can't, he's already shaking by the time I get to McGregor, he's like, and he hates the holidays, he hated the four-day week, he powdered all the time. And today, I told him, I said, you're going to junior high, man. He hit the hall and he ran in that door and he talks in the mornings.
Oh, he does.
As for that chicken, he's putting her chicken and he runs straight to Suzie because he knows Suzie has his chicken.
He'll cry outside my door until I give him the chicken.
So, he, he, it's been so wonderful to see him, what he's doing for all of us, so. I thank y'all so much. Thank you, Joyce.
Sudden cardiac arrest, preparing this.
Well, most of the items tonight have to do with health and safety. And so kind of in the same vein, after that Monday night football game a couple of weeks ago when Demare Hamlin had that really serious episode on the field and everybody thought that he might even pass away from a, you know, a heart attack of some sort. And it really brought to the forefront the need for school districts and everyone to be prepared for something like that. And so three things basically, we have AEDs on our campuses in different strategic places. So at our next training that we have district-wide, we're going to make sure that everyone knows, you know, where they are. You know, where are the AEDs located? Are they charged and ready to go? And then making sure that all the coaches, nurses, PE teachers, band directors and cheerleader sponsors are all certified in CPR and AED. And so that's a U I L requirement. And our folks are, but we just want to do refreshers. Maybe someone's not real familiar and like, where is the AED at? Make sure everybody knows where they're at, very simple to use, but just making sure that we can do that in an event we have an emergency. There's also some AEDs in the high school new gym back hallway, the junior high new gym back hallway, the softball coach's office, Coach Toker's office, the athletic training building and across from most of the nurses' offices at all the campuses. And so they're sprinkled everywhere. So if someone asks you, hey, does the school have an AED, do they know how to use it? You can say yes and reassure them, we're going to have more refreshers too, because that's important. Did y'all have any questions about that, the AED?
That's a great idea.
I know that they revisited the story where Steve Howard at Live Oak had saved that one young woman who was a basketball player. I think she collapsed, it's been a couple of years ago, and almost died on the court, but he was able to save her with the AED. And he said now in the interview, every time they go to a game, the first thing they ask is, where's your AED? And so it's a good precaution.
You know, it's amazing, I actually got to, I, I did a volleyball game, an all-star game and she played and they told me and I just couldn't believe it because she actually got the MVP of that volleyball.
She's lucky to be alive, but it's thankful to some quick thinking by the staff. Great story.
Review of educational philosophy.
All right, so I think the philosophy here, this is still information items, but every year we just review it just to make sure it's still pertinent, just kind of jog your memory. Way back in 2017, we had that big strategic planning event and we had lots of different community people and different people and they had all those different groups. And so that was a big undertaking. I remember one of the things that several people said is, don't let it just sit on the shelf, use it. And so we have been using it, it guides everything we do. And so the beliefs, objectives, parameters and all the strategic actions that was produced, that still guides us today. We updated the Portrait of the Graduate in 2019. Been in 2021, remember we adopted Doing What's Best, Willie Clark's saying as our official slogan and mission statement. And so do you guys see the need to update or tweak anything or do y'all still feel good with that?
I think it's a great document.
We put a lot of work into it.
Yeah.
And so, but if you guys do come up with something or think of something, let me know. And we can always add it later as an action item. But right now, all that good stuff is still guiding us today.
Board operating procedures.
So in that same vein, another document that we've looked at occasionally and make small tweaks to is the Board Operating Procedures. And that has all the different functions that you guys do, governance and different things, reporting to inquiries, my evaluation, code of ethics, all those things. And again, our lawyers review this, they approve it. But if y'all see something, every once in a while, y'all will pinpoint something and say, hey, that's in the wrong area. We need to update that wording, just let me know. And we can do that. But again, tonight's an information item, chance for y'all to, if y'all did know something, let me know.
Board activity calendar.
And the last one of those three pieces is the calendar. And again, that's something where by month, it just is a reminder of like, okay, what are we supposed to do in January? What are we supposed to do in February? And every once in a while, again, we'll tweak something or make a small change. And so if y'all see something or you think of something, again, it's an information item tonight. If you're like, oh, we need to change that, just let us know and we can add that to a future board agenda item.
Presentation, discussion, action items.
All right. Going in the vein of health and safety, remember that's kind of the theme tonight. A really good deal that our nurses were able to get for us was they applied for a grant to get Narcan for all the campuses. And you know, you've probably heard the stories of how deadly fentanyl is. And if you even touch fentanyl, it can kill you depending on how it's been cut or what percentage of it is potency. And so most police officers carry it because if they come into contact with it, I mean, it could kill you instantly unless they are able to give you Narcan. And so one really frightening statistic that Correal Memorial gave me was that in 2020, Texas Department of Health said there were 883 people in Texas that died from fentanyl overdoses. In 2021, it climbed to 1,672, an 89% increase. And so I'm sure those types of pills are here in the community, they're everywhere. So we want to be proactive and have Narcan on hand. And again, that could be really expensive, but our nurses got that really good grant. And again, that could be really expensive, but our nurses got that really good grant, and we were able to get it for free. If Narcan was to be administered, only our nurses, athletic trainer, or police officers can administer it, not just anyone can. And then obviously, even the certified people, we still call 911. They still go to the ER. They still get checked out. And so tonight, in October, we had amended our FFAC local. Tonight, we have a full-blown Narcan policy that our lawyer, Tyler Azell, has blessed. He's read over it with a fine-tooth comb. And he said it's good to go for your approval. So I would present that for your approval tonight as presented.
Does anybody have any questions about that policy? Do I hear a motion that we accept it? Jimmy, do I hear a second? Mary Ann, any further? All in favor? You know.
We try to keep fentanyl at the forefront. I've made some jazzy Facebook posts about it. We had a parent night about it and other drugs. Just trying to keep the community informed as far as the dangers of it and making sure that our kids don't fall into the hands of someone who's selling those types of pills. Closely related to the Narcan is the EpiPins. This is another very, and EpiPen is very expensive. To get an EpiPen, it's quite costly, and our nurses were able to get that grant to where we get a handful for each campus to have that they're unassigned. So most people that have an EpiPen, it's theirs. They bring it to school, they give to the nurse, they have it on hand. But these would be extra. And so the main thing is we want to make sure the parents know that. That doesn't mean you don't bring your kids EpiPen. These are just extra in case there was some sort of anaphylactic shock that a student has and they weren't expecting it. And we have one on hand to be able to help support them. And so, again, anybody can be trained to give an EpiPen, but our nurses and police officers will be providing each campus more information on this. Again, our next staff development day, we'll talk about the Narcan, we'll talk about the EpiPins. And again, we presented this briefly in October, but we have a full-blown EpiPen policy. Then again, our school lawyer, Tyler Azell, has blessed. He read over it very closely. And so I would recommend that you approve the unassigned EpiPen policy as presented.
Any comments on that policy? Do I hear a motion to accept it? Charlie? Linda seconds. Any further discussion? All in favor? Okay, everyone. Tasers.
All right. So once we bring you back to life, then we're going to shock you with a taser. This would be, as part of our school police department creation, you know, back in the summer, we presented all those different policies about how they're supposed to operate. And we wanted to go into even more detail about a taser. And the main thing that we want to get the point across is that that is a last resort. It would never be, ever, ever be used for discipline. In fact, most of our officers, when you talk to them, they've never even had to pull their taser even out in the community. But most likely, it would be for, you know, if there was an upset individual that came on campus or something, an adult, and that would be a good option, a non-lethal option to use. But again, that's a last resort, and hopefully, some of these police officers work for 10, 20, 30 years and never have to use it. But it's good to have it. Better to have it on hand and not need it than to need it and not have it. So again, this would be a more in-depth taser policy that kind of falls under the broader umbrella of use of force. Again, Tyler, our school lawyer, he's reviewed and read all this very closely. He approves of it. And so I would recommend that the board adopt the taser policy as presented.
Is there any further discussion of the taser policy? Do I hear a motion to accept it? Linda, a second by Calvin. Any further discussion? All in favor? All right, the police department and the city.
We had gone over this at last, but it's training, I kind of, board meeting, and we prefaced it with, we may have to come back just a little more time because the city was still reviewing it. Brandon Belt has reviewed it. He has now approved it. He made a few minor tweaks, nothing really substantive. So we've got Chief Golkey's blessing, Chief Stiles' blessing, our lawyer has blessed it, Brandon Belt has blessed it. And so everyone felt like it was good, worked well for all the parties involved. And so this should be hopefully the final version of the document, that now both the city council, which will meet soon, they can approve it, and we can approve it, same document. So my recommendation would be that the board approve the MOU with the city of Gatesville regarding police jurisdiction as presented.
I make the motion.
Mary Ann motions, seconded by Charlie. Any further discussion? All in favor? Okay, it passes. Policy 120.
Last policy. This is a policy-heavy month. This one is our Update 120, which happens periodically for all school districts. So TASB recommends changes to different things occasionally to make sure we're keeping up to date with all the legislative changes, all the different commissioner rulings and different things of that nature. And so local policies in particular have to be a little bit more closer attention. And so there were only six of them this time, and I made a little short synopsis of each one that changed. And again, usually, it's something very minor. This is blessed by TASB, which takes care of us in all local school districts. And so we trust them implicitly. Our lawyers trust TASB. And so I would recommend that the board approve any of those minor changes that TASB is listing per their recommendations.
Mary Ann makes the motion that we approve those. I hear a second. Jimmy seconds. Any further discussion? All in favor? Okay, that completes our meeting. We'll go into executive session at 6:05.
Thank you, guys.